Okay, so, um, thanks, everyone. My name is Ferguson. I'm the Executive Director of Capital City Village. And for those of you that may not be familiar with us, Capital City Village, it's a local nonprofit, and we focus on helping seniors age well in their own homes. And we do that through a blend of volunteer services like transportation, technology help, minor home fixits, as well as programs to keep people socially engaged and to keep them informed, much like this program today. So thank you all for joining us and giving us a little bit of your time today. I'd like to introduce and welcome our speaker, Ryan Otullo, and he is a reporter for the Austin American Statesman. I'll give a little bio of him and an introduction, and then let him take it away and run with it. So Ryan has lived in Austin since 2014. He moved to work for the Statesman, and he's covered three beats during that time, including the UT Longhorns Athletics from 2014 to 2016, Courts and Criminal Justice from 2016 to 2020, and City Government, 2020 to current. Prior to Austin, he lived in Toledo, Ohio, and worked at The Blade Newspaper. It was his first job after graduating from Bowling Green State University in Northwest Ohio. Ryan is a distance runner and just completed the Houston Marathon in under three hours this last weekend. He says he credits or blames the Town Lake Running Trail for getting him hooked on the sport. Ryan lives in Northwest Austin with his wife, Megan. He notes, "No kids, no dogs, no cats, just us." So, welcome, Ryan. Thank you so much for giving us your time today. I'm going to go ahead and mute myself, and I would suggest others go ahead and stay muted while we listen to Ryan's talk. And then, like I said, we'll have plenty of time for questions and answers. All right, thank you, Ryan. Take it away.
Tommy, thank you for the introduction, and thank you all for coming on and hanging out with me. I look forward to your questions. For now, I'll answer some, or address some topics that I had just taken notes on last night that may be of interest to you, sort of how City of Austin government works. There are 11 city council members, including the mayor. The mayor is over the entire city, and then the 10 council members are over different geographical districts in the city. We each have one, no matter where we live, a council representative. And, you know, I'll start back. I got on the beat in 2020, and that was a really interesting time in the city because pandemic. Then you have the racial injustice protests and all of the police reforms that spun out of those. And then, of course, the homelessness problem in Austin was really visible with tents virtually everywhere in the city. So I was dumped into a lot of different crises and trying to figure those out quickly, what is going on? And the one thing that was apparent is, at that time, the council was probably as far to the political left as maybe any council in Austin has ever been. There were 11 members and 11 Democrats, and it was, they were getting pulled further and further to the left, evidenced by them repealing that camping ban in 2019 that allowed, basically with some rules applied, for people to set up a tent just about anywhere in Austin. Very liberal policy. And then, in 2020, August, they cut or redistributed $150 million from the Police Department budget. So very liberal decisions. Since then, already, we've come back just slightly more to the center. Two of the members who were some of the more liberal council members, Jimmy Flanagan in Northwest Austin and Delia Garza in South Austin, are no longer on the council. Greg Cassar, who is probably the most liberal member of the city council, is now leaving. He's running for Congress. So you're starting to see a shift back to a little more moderate Democratic policy decisions. And, you know, it's interesting to see how these council members vote on different decisions. The campaign to lift the camping ban was the 9-2 decision. To defund the police was 11 to 0. Land use, there's a big fight over that on the council of where and how big you can build things in the city. And there's kind of ideological differences and factions on the council there, and that fight is currently tied up in the courts. So just very interesting to, you know, a newcomer for me in 2020 to see how the politics have changed, how the different groups tend to vote together on certain issues. And a lot of, a lot of the decision-making, best I can tell, is related to, people don't want to lose their jobs. They have to run for reelection every four years, and they're going to do whatever they can to appease to their constituents who are responsible for either determining, yes, you get to stay in office, or no, we want somebody new. And there's been a number of instances where I see a decision that was made. I wonder if that's truly what they believe is in the best interest of the city or in the best interest of keeping their job. So, yeah, I think that's been really eye-opening for me. You know, I want to talk about the top issues of the year, 2022, that I envision, and, you know, I don't want to make too many predictions because past couple of years, things, crises have been dumped on us that we could have never foreseen. But as of right now, January 19th, I'm looking at, you know, the continued response to COVID-19. That's, hopefully, we're moving in the right direction there. But, you know, city officials are still hammering, you know, get vaccines, wear masks, and they're doing everything they can without, and sometimes even with the state intervening and saying, "You can't do that, Austin." And, you know, that fight has been going on for decades, conservative state leaders versus liberal Austin leaders. The homelessness issue is still a big one, where the city is desperately wanting to get people off the tents, off streets, and into housing, be it hotels. The city has bought four hotels to put people up. There is a plan now that will cost in excess of $500 million to house 3,000 people. There is another $100 million, I think, that still needs to be raised. The last time I checked, as of a couple weeks ago. And, you know, I think that's going to be a big, big legacy-defining moment for Mayor Steve Adler in his final year in office. Can he get people off the streets and into hotels and kind of solve this issue that everybody just hates? I mean, nobody wants to see people living under underpasses and in parks, along sidewalks. Affordability is another big one. I mean, Austin has become very difficult to afford for many of us. It's just the housing market, and I can speak from personal experience. We were looking for a house for over a year. We're on the market for over a year, and just kept getting beat, finished runner-up on many houses, which doesn't, doesn't help you a whole lot, being runner-up. And it just, it's out of control, and how do you fix that? Well, it's challenging because we live in a highly desirable city that has a lot of great amenities that attract people, that attract people with money. And so, a house that may have cost, excuse me, $500,000 just a couple of years ago is now going closer to 800, maybe a million. And it's just, it's very tough on many working-class families. Just today, the mayor's office began floating the possibility of an affordable housing bond for the November election, 300 million to 500 million that voters would have to approve, that would go towards the creation of affordable housing. So I think that's, again, another legacy-defining moment for the mayor before he leaves office. Another big topic is the mayoral election. You know, Steve Adler's been the mayor just about as long as I've been in Austin. He became the mayor after winning an election in November 2014, and he, he's done. This will be his final year, his eighth and final year. And that job is up for others. Two candidates have lined up so far, Celia Israel, who's a statehouse representative, as well as Jennifer Verden, who's a realtor here in Austin. And we're waiting to hear about two more candidates, Kathy Togo, a city council member, thinking about running, and Kirk Watson, who is a former Austin mayor and former state senator, is thinking about running. And I think we're going to probably get some answers within the next month or so from those two. It'll be an expensive race. I think candidates are going to have to raise somewhere around $1 million to win that office, which is very difficult because individual contributions are capped at $400. So anybody on here can only give $400 to a candidate. So getting a million, how do you do that? Well, you sell finance. So necessarily, that means that it's probably going to be a wealthy person that wins that office. That's just how it works, and that's how it's worked for a while in Austin. So that's going to be a big story to follow as we approach the November election. Still a while away, but it'll come closer than you think. Believe me, it always does. Other things, I'm really looking at are policing reform and staffing. We're at very low staffing on Austin Police Department right now, and it's, it's a problem. There are thoughts about how we do policing, whether we need more officers or if we could have other people trained up to do officer functions. But patrol response times right now are higher than that they, they should be. I think everybody agrees on that. So that's going to be a continued topic to follow, as well as, I think my final one is, the city is going to have to make some big decisions on whether they're going to settle lawsuits with some of these people who were injured during the protests of 2020 by Austin police officers. There is about a dozen, and I think one was just filed yesterday, lawsuits against the city from people who were badly injured by these less lethal beanbag rounds munitions that really, I mean, some went into skulls and really just did what they're not supposed to do, which was seriously injure people. And I think the city's probably looking at some big settlement payouts, and that's going to be me and you that are paying those. That's taxpayer money. So big decisions need to be made there. As well as, finally, the topic I wanted to touch on was, there's a new council district map. As I said earlier, we each have a council member representative, one of 10. And every 10 years, that map gets redrawn. And there was one that was redrawn late last year, and it'll go into effect really with the November elections. Not a big difference. If you look at the two maps, and I thought about putting them up on a screen, but they're so comparable and that it's hard to point out who is moving where. And the city needs to do a better job of that as we get closer to notifying residents of, are you moving to one district or staying in the one you're in? But really, the biggest, the upshot of that is you could have a different council member, meaning you might be voting in this November election when you weren't expecting to be because you have a new council member, a new district. But it doesn't make a huge difference, frankly. I mean, there's no, there's no district-wide, like, coffee meetups or barbecues, you know? It's just, all it really matters is that you have a different council member that you would call if you have an issue with, you know, sidewalk repair or broken swing in your local park. So, yeah, that's, that's kind of what I'm looking at in 2022. We're in 2022, yeah. And it'll be a good year, and I'm excited to see just kind of all these things unpack as we move from month to month. And with that, yeah, what questions do y'all have? I'll do my best to answer them.
Yeah, thank you, Ryan. That is great. So we will, and that is a lot to digest, really, but we'll look at reviewing some questions. So I see, Henry, you have your hand up, and I'll scan and see if others folks do. So you can use the raise hand function under the reactions tab on Zoom, or you can simply all scan, and you can just raise your hand and chime in. But Henry will let you go first, so you'll need to unmute. Henry, you're still muted.
Sorry, you mentioned that the city was going to spend about half a billion dollars to house 3,000 people. And left my math wrong. That means we're going to spend about 167K on each one of them. Does that mean that Austin is just making itself a magnet to attract homeless people from all over the country? And being, we just as well go, let these guys give them a check and let them go out to moving spades and buy alcohol for 167K? What is that really solving?
That's a good question, and I should clarify, not all of that money will come from the city. The county is chipping in quite a bit, too, with money that came from the federal government for COVID relief. And there'll be some private donations as well. But, yeah, it costs a lot of money to house people experiencing homelessness. You have to build the housing. You have to hire people to administer services. You have to pay for those services. Many of these people are deeply vulnerable and need constant attention, and it costs a lot of money to do that. Frankly, the city should have done a much better job 10 years ago, 15 years ago, 20 years ago, preparing for this. And they didn't do a good enough job of that. And to your question, does this attract people from other cities? As of early 2020, I believe, the city's homeless population, about 30% became homeless in a city other than Austin. That's when they first became homeless. So, you know, the overwhelming majority are those who have been here a while. But, yes, just anecdotally, I mean, I've heard of people coming from Corpus Christi, Houston, other places. I, I don't know, and those I speak with don't believe that it's because Austin is providing these resources. I would think, if I was homeless, I would want to go to Houston, which does a much better job of housing its homeless. I was just there last weekend, and, you know, I saw a couple tents. But by and large, they do a very good job with their housing model. So I don't know if Austin would be where I want to be. But, you know, I think, you know, it's certainly a concern. If we can't house the people we have now, we certainly don't want to add to that number because it's, you add to the expense as well.
Yeah, and as you point out, a really complicated issue. I'm going to move next to Stephanie. You have your hand up, if you would like to go ahead and chime in.
Thank you, Tommy. First of all, Ryan, thank you so very, very much for your top-notch reporting. I've probably read about every single article you've written. And so for that reason, I'm pretty well-informed on some of the topics that you've mentioned. Speaking to Henry's concern, and you explained it to a large degree, but if I remember correctly, I looked at the budget that was presented by Diana Gray, the Homeless Strategy Officer, and only about half of those allocated or to be allocated funds are actually spent on capital expenditures. So, you know, because Austin does a lot of outreach and crisis services, a permanent supportive housing, which is tremendously successful, according to ECHO, but it is expensive. And you are right about on target with your comment that the majority of people that are homeless in Austin are from Austin. Echo's recent data that was shared with us by Ed McHors at a presentation with Capital City Village, he's an ECHO board member, you probably know that, was 63% are native Austinites. But, but I would love for you to write an article about how Houston's arrangement is so successful. If you feel like you have enough facts for that, that would be really good.
It's a good, good, good suggestion. And the short answer is, they invested a long time ago in housing. And as a, as a, as a result, they're now having to spend much less money than Austin is per individual. But, yeah, no, that's, I'll write that down. I'll explore that because that's a, that's a really good idea. Why has Houston been able to do it? Austin has not. And another, another part of that, too, I think, is, you know, Houston is the fourth-largest city in the US, and it's been big for a while. Austin is 11th, but it hasn't been big for all that long. It's rapidly, it's grown so much, even since I've been here eight years ago. And the growing pains of now, I don't think were foreseen back when the decision should have been made to buy up housing and prepare for this moment because it just grew so fast. And now we're stuck with crises like affordability and homelessness, which go together. I mean, those are very much connected crises. We're dealing with that stuff when it would have been nice to have dealt with it a long time ago.
Yes, thank you. The question I wanted to ask you, I also, I watched every single reimagining public safety work group. And I'm going to refrain from comments on that, only to say that, more generally speaking, I think the council finally realized that the cancellation of the cadet classes, coupled with the disproportionate attrition rate, really hurt the size of APD. And that's why they began reinstating the class in last June. But, you know, Chief Chacon has talked about the need for more police officers now. And what we generally think is, well, we can't really do that until we have more trained. And that's a slow process. You know, the first cadet class, I think, is supposed to be graduating at the end of this month. And of the original 100, last I saw, about 21 had dropped out of the class. So when you look at what we need and the continued attrition, it can take quite some time to replenish the force. So do you know what Chief Chacon's ideas are? Does he want to bring in police from other cities, or?
It's a very good question, very interesting topic. The Austin Police Department right now is budgeted for a little over 1,800 officer positions. And there are 200 and growing vacancies that are just not filled. And so in the November, what, yeah, November election, last November, there was a proposition that would have required, had it passed, the Austin Police Department to employ two officers per 1,000 residents. And that's a, that's a moving number as the city grows. It would be, you'd have to have more officers. It failed by a lot because it would cost a lot of money, more officers than many thought we needed. But even those who didn't like that proposal still say we need more officers than we have. And to Stephanie's point, you can't just snap your fingers and get more officers. You have to train them. And there will be a class graduating here, yes, I believe, this month, February, and then another one starting after that. And then there will be a third class, as Stephanie pointed out, of officers who are working in other cities right now that would be able to just move over to Austin. So it's a much shorter class because they've already gotten basic training, but they need to learn how things work in Austin. So you add those officers, but you're balancing that against attrition rates that we've never seen before. People are, people are leaving the force because, one, they're eligible for retirement. We're coming up on a time, like, 20 years ago, there was a huge hiring in Austin, and now those people are ready to retire. That's part of it. Other is, you know, the Austin City Council cut 150 million or reallocated, and I don't want to get into all the nuances of what they did or didn't do. But, you know, that really upset the Police Department. So people are quitting. The hiring of their, the newest police chief, he was not popular among the, among his officers. So I think that's part of it, too. So there are, there are a lot of reasons that people are fleeing the Austin Police Department. And it's hard to just replace them. So it's a problem. It's going to take years, probably, to get the city back to that 1,809 officers that are budgeted right now. So it's, coupled with, you know, there is a, some crime is on the rise in Austin. Homicides, we set a record last year. And that mirrors kind of a trend nationwide, where people are just, frankly, killing people more than they ever, than they have in a long time. I think the pandemic has something to do with it. People wound up, but it's a, it's a terrible trend. And, you know, so these are things that we, as a city, need to keep our eye on and recognize our, our issues that need to be fixed.
Great insight. I really appreciate that, too, because, yeah, so much of it we don't really see unless we're digging into the details. Clearly, Stephanie spent some time reviewing that, and thank you for those insights. Curious, now I'm going to scan real quick and see if there are other questions. And if not, I want to just kind of throw one at you. Most of the people on this call have lived in Austin long enough to remember when the council didn't really have districts. We had sort of, everybody was at-large, and there were certain understandings about what seat was dedicated to Latino representative of the community, et cetera, et cetera. So what are your thoughts as far as, and then I'll go over to Scott's question, but what are your thoughts as far as the way that the council is structured now? Do you, do you feel like it adequately represents the different sides of Austin, the different sections?
I do. Starting in 2015 is when we moved to the different geographical districts. Excuse me, and as a result of that, you now have council members who look like, frankly, they're constituents. You know, you have Hispanic, Black. You have, it's very much a female-dominated council right now. Whereas in the past, you know, you were a council member for the entire city. So it just was not- Whereas in the past, you know, you were a council member for the entire city. So it just was not as diverse. And we're, we're, we're seeing that now. I don't want to do the quick math because I'll, I'll miss somebody, but right now we have just three men on the council versus eight women. And all three of those men will be leaving soon. So I don't, you know, and a chance that they would be replaced by, by women or men. You know, so it, it's just a, it's a very diverse council that I think has really achieved the goal of representing people of diverse backgrounds, diverse interests and needs. And, you know, I think most people would say it's been a success that switched to the geographical districts.
That's great. Thank you for that. I do want to move now. Scott, you had a question if you want to go ahead and unmute.
Ryan, thank you for being here today and sharing your insights. We appreciate it. I have a question about morale in, in the city, city government departments. Your colleague at the Statesman this morning got an article about the upcoming selection of a new EMS chief. And apparently they're down to two candidates. One is the acting head from inside and another is an outsider. And talks about the fact that there's definite morale issues in the EMS department. You spoke a little bit about some issues with the police department. Is this pervasive in the city government and other departments as well? And if so, is there a discussion of replacing the city manager?
Really good question, Scott. Thank you. Yes, EMS, like police, is short staffed right now. And unlike police, you don't hear about it as much. Excuse me. As far as, you know, is that pervasive throughout city hall? I, I don't know. I think people are wound up generally whether they work in city government or in, in the private sector or, you know, even in the media, just, we've been through a lot these past couple of years with the pandemic. And EMS certainly has had to respond to a lot of that. And so I, and, and, you know, the, the frustration in the fights politically, you know, starting in twenty sixteen in, in the White House, certainly have filtered down to this level municipal government. And, you know, there's been a lot of frustration of, you know, just people not agreeing with one another and not wanting to agree with one another. And, you know, in my end of the year Q and A with Mayor Adler, he spoke on that and just said it, he admitted it. It's beat him up a little bit. So I, I think just working in any kind of government job right now is, is challenging because there's just, everybody has an opinion or, you know, a Facebook account or a Twitter account where they're, they want to chime in. And so it's, it's very difficult, you know, to, to kind of do your job sometime. And to your point, is there a chance we would get a new city manager? You know, there was talk about that last year. There was some frustration with Spencer Cronk from some city council members. I think that's quieted down a little bit. I wouldn't anticipate that coming anytime soon, barring some unforeseen drastic event. But, you know, there was concern about the way he implemented the camping ban. And, you know, his response to the winter storm last year, but I, I think cooler heads have prevailed and I think everything, everybody's kind of okay right now.
Thank you for that. I'm going to scan really quickly and see if there are any other questions. You did, it's interesting. You mentioned, I'll just insert really quickly, the, the city manager. And it does seem with the shift, this is my own observation, but maybe you can respond to it, that it seems like the mayor and the city manager used to have more power in their positions and, you know, kind of that strong mayor, strong city manager type city structure. But now that the councils are more appropriately geographically represented, it does seem, at least from the resident perspective, to evened out a little bit so that the council is not quite so, you know, powerless there. I wonder if you have any observations there? And then I want to go to Mark Hoffman, who has the next question.
Yeah, ju- just quickly, you know, it, it's kind of a a, a, a misconception. People think that because you're mayor of City Austin, you have all this power to do whatever you want. In the way that the government here is set up, you don't have any more power than any of the other ten council members in terms of you have one vote. Now you get to run meetings, you're the face of the city, you know, there's, there's obviously some gravitas to it. I think you have a bigger budget for your staff. But you just have the same vote as any of the other council members. And then if resolution gets passed and it's on the city manager to implement it along with his office and different staff. So, you know, I, I, it's, being the mayor of Austin is a tough job because you get criticized for things that you really didn't have a whole lot to do with. Or you, you, you should share the blame with ten others. So a pretty thankless job. I'm surprised that anybody would want to run for it right now, but there, there's going to be no shortage of candidates in November.
Go ahead and Mark, if you want to unmute and ask your question.
We've been wandering around the, the net. Okay, Ryan, thank you for being here and I've enjoyed your presentation. I really think the idea of going to someplace like Houston and talking about their success and in a very delicate way urge Austin to follow a solid model, you know, of what's happening with the homeless. On, on the other hand, I listened for some reason, there was an article in the Dallas Morning News, I believe, about the new police chief has lowered crime significantly. And what they have focused on is homicide and robberies and let the traffic things go and marijuana go. And so that also might be an interesting thing to look at how their police chief really has a long range plan and managing all the crises that are coming up. And he's, he's not doing it with more people. They're, they're really focused on specific areas of Dallas where they know these homicides and robberies are going. I thought that was interesting.
Yeah. And I would say that in Austin, they are not focused on marijuana possession, at least small amounts right now. The coming to your ballot in May will be a proposition where you can decide if that will be no longer an offense to possess misdemeanor amounts of marijuana. Right now, police are not arresting or citing for it anyway, but May's vote would actually enshrine that into city law. And in terms of, you know, traffic, I looked at this a couple of weeks ago and speeding tickets last year were down, and, and I don't have the numbers in front of me right now, but by a significant, significant amount year over year. It keeps going down. And, you know, I think part of that is you just, you have a much smaller patrol unit. I know anecdotally, when I drive around, I don't see police officers anymore. I don't, I, I don't see them on the side of the road with their radar gun. They're not focused on it. And, you know, as a potential consequence of this, and, you know, there's people that can argue it either way, traffic fatalities are way up. Maybe, maybe not way up, but up. We, we set a record last year. And, you know, you can tie that to, well, the speeders and, you know, in the city is doing some improvements to roads, roads that are not safe to make them safer. But it, it's, it's interesting. You can talk to a number of people on crime statistics who really know what they're talking about. And they may have completely different opinions on how you slow crime. Some people would just say homicides are completely random. And it's hard to slow something that is random. Austin is, still has a relatively low annual homicide number, but the rate i- is increasing a lot. And, you know, certainly we have fewer homicides here than in Dallas. So there, there's a lot of things. I know that the chief, Chief Chacon right now really wants to get guns that are illegal off the street. He has a, a program right now, along with the district attorney, Jose Garza, to, to get those off the streets. One thing I think that, that really is becoming an issue more and more, you know, when I got here, and I keep saying that when I got here, like I've been here a long time, it's been, it's been eight years. But, you know, I'd go down to Sixth Street, have a good time, get a beer and listen to some live music. It's dangerous down there right now. I mean, you, you, you see some stuff. It, it, I, I wouldn't want to go down there. There's fights. There is shootings. It's just, it's not a lovely place at one in the morning and on a Saturday. So I think that, you know, the city and the city council, the city council and police department have taken some steps to try to address crime in that area. Anytime you mix young people, alcohol and guns, you know, the results can be pretty predictable. So I don't know if I answered your question, but there's just, you, you, you talk to a lot of experts.
One, one more quick thing, since we're fellow marathoners, I wanted to share with you that I ran the first Austin Marathon, three and a half times around Town Lake. Four oh five, it almost killed me.
Oh, my gosh. Was that before they had the boardwalk on Town Lake?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. It was, the, the trails were about maybe six feet wide. It was fairly, it was wonderful, but it was fairly primitive.
Well, i- i- in my opinion, of all the many great things Austin has, the, the hike and bike trail might be the best. I just, I go down there all the time. I used to live on there. And it's just, it's, it's a beautiful place to be.
Thank you for the comment. But Mark, you lived to tell about it, so. Question, our next question comes from Stephanie. If you want to go ahead.
Yeah, you know, speaking to Mark's concern about the crime and many residents and Ryan's comment, you know, I've looked multiple times at the APD chief monthly reports. And although homicide, like in many large urban areas, has spiked tremendously, that is not the case for many other crimes against persons. Crimes, even crimes against property, and then you have the crimes against society. So just to sort of maintain perhaps a little more balanced respective, perspective, it's just helpful to look at those. But everybody wants to live in a completely crime-free society. But, you know, I've been here for forty-three years. And I've had two ten-speed bikes stolen. And I had my duplex I was living in broken into, and that was like forty years ago. So these things do happen. And we now live in a city of almost a million people. So, you know, it, it just bears keeping that in mind to have a little bit of perspective. But, you know, another question came to mind that maybe you can address, Ryan, of late, very recently, actually, a bunch of us in Allendale have been looking at the proposed changes to the Austin's, Austin Strategic Mobility Plan. And it's all about people-powered transportation. And good for folks who use their feet and their legs and can bike, whether commuting or for recreation. But, and I think people are overly alarmed at some of the right-of-way widths that are connected to those. And anyway, I understand why that likely will not be the case in established neighborhoods. What I don't understand so much is the extreme focus on bicycling around Austin without considering the cost benefit of this, which leads me to a larger question. Every city has a lot of unmet needs. And like wastewater infrastructure is maybe just one in Austin. So I do wonder when the council members make a decision on specific issues, are they always keeping in mind the broader concern about absolute needs and wants? You know, what really must be done and what is that going to cost? And then what would be nice to have? Maybe not as much of a benefit as to such a large number, but what would be nice to have? And I don't think the council has been particularly balanced on that in recent years. What do you think?
You know, it's, it's interesting. And as it relates to transportation, you know, we passed in November of twenty twenty-two bonds. One to for parks and bike paths and trails and, you know, to get around better. And the other being Project Connect, of course, the seven billion dollar, we, we haven't spoken about that yet, the, the transit system. And both of those passed pretty, pretty easily. But, you know, to your point, there, there is some sentiment of, are those things nice things to have or do we absolutely need them? Because how many people are going to ride this transit that, in a city that, you know, isn't dependent on it? New York's dependent on transit, Chicago dependent. People still like their cars here, especially when it's a hundred degrees out. You know, they don't, they don't want to ride their bike. They don't want to walk to work or walk to a bus station. So that's going to be really interesting to see how that gets rolled out. And, you know, is there going to be housing along these lines so people, people can easily get to the, the, the station? You know, I, I think, yes, we look into climate change. I think Austin and its leaders feel a need to be the leaders. You know, reducing carbon emissions and making it easier to get places in, in ways other than traditional automobile. And, you know, I think we've seen that time and time again with them pushing these bonds, Project Connect and mobility bonds. And, you know, I think, you know, we'll, we'll see if the city embraces these things in ten years, twenty years, thirty years, or if we just continue driving on I-35 and getting stuck in traffic, bumper-to-bumper traffic trying to get home.
Yeah, yeah, it's, you, you may be familiar with Allendale. So it's a very established neighborhood and no doubt there's plenty like Allendale. And it's in between Shoal Creek, which now has a bidirectional bike facility and Burnett Road. So the proposed changes, which are driven by the bike plan, are to offer bicyclists, for example, many, many opportunities to, to drive between, to ride between Burnett and Shoal Creek throughout the neighborhood. I think it's overdone. I, I'm not particularly concerned about these fixed right-of-ways. I don't believe that the preferred ideal design can simply be done in already established neighborhoods where it's heavily residential. But I'm just talking about, and looking at other city needs, like I suggested, the wastewater infrastructure, for example. I'm just talking about balancing needs and being upfront about all of those when considering specific plans such as the one that I just mentioned.
I, I think you're ready to launch a campaign to run for city council. You, you would be in District Seven, I believe, right?
I am, yeah. And I see Leslie Poole is on. Yeah, years ago I used to think I'd be interested in politics. But I'm from Boston and I'm Irish. That means I have a tendency toward belligerence. And so I think it best that I, I remain out of politics.
Well, it's, it's good that you recognize that in yourself.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, Stephanie, you're showing some restraint, but you've asked some really good questions in our session today. And we are. Um, and we are coming a little close to the hour. Uh, so I want to be respectful of your time, Ryan. But this has been really incredibly, uh, just really insightful and really appreciate all your observations and insights. Are there, I, I think Henry has one more question and, and Sue. So I want to make sure we kind of have some time for that. So Henry, if you want to pop in and then Sue, if you could follow up with yours and then we'll see if we can wind it down a little bit.
One quick, uh, comment, Stephanie, the reason that crimes like breaking and entering are down with COVID is that the cops, the crooks know that we're all at home and being Texans, we're all under the teeth. So, uh, Ryan, the other thing is just to blow your own horn. Tell us what makes a good reporter.
I think somebody who is both curious and nosy. I think you have to have those two traits. You have to want to learn and ask the questions and then maybe go further in asking those questions than the average person to be comfortable going. So I've always said, um, you know, I, 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 that may be one of my best traits is I, I'm, I'm pretty nosy. So I will, I'm not, I, I, I'm not, um, I'm not bashful or shy about asking things or, or giving my opinions and, you know, and, um, I've, uh, I've probably upset some people along the ways, but I'm always pretty good at patching up those relationships as well.
Yeah, my comment and question is related akin to Henry's. And that is, how do you as a reporter separate your personal views from the subject and the facts?
It's a, it's a really good question. Um, I can only speak to personally how I do it. I am such a gray area person. Uh, I kind of drive myself nuts sometimes where I don't really have very strong views on many things. I, I, I listen to one side, I listen to another and, you know, there's some things that I like and, you know, uh, but ultimately I'm just, you know, I, um, if I wasn't doing this job, you wouldn't see me out at, uh, rallies or, you know, knocking on doors for a political candidate or something. I'm just not that, um, passionate about certain topics. I'm passionate about the journalism and, and telling the stories. But, you know, I'm, uh, I'm just a gray area person and I guess hope, hopefully that's a good thing for my job.
I'd say it's a good thing and we really appreciate your time today and your, I, I see how a full-time job it is to keep up with all of these various subjects. And we, your audience, appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm sorry, but Tom McHors has had his hand up every time and he, I'd like to hear what Tom has to say.
Oh, I didn't scan, I didn't scan closely enough. Thank you, Jimmy. I, yeah, please, Tom, uh, you may be able to, uh, help us round out the hour.
Well, thank you for your episode. I've had two questions along the line. They've been asking you about. Number one, what's the hardest part of your job? And then the second, comparing contrast, being the reporter on the UT sports beat with being the city.
That's a great question.
Both really good questions. The hardest part, I think would just separating, uh, truth from spin to see, you know, to really get at the heart of what something means versus what somebody wants you to think it means. And, you know, when, when you first start a beat, I don't care whether it's covering city government or covering the courthouse where I was before the city government or covering UT sports. You don't know those things right away. It takes some time to develop and, and really get that, uh, I call it my BS meter really tuned up. So that, that's, that, that can be a challenge as far as comparing, um, UT sports, covering UT sports, the city government, uh, big difference. But at the, at the heart of it, you are writing critically on something that a lot of people care about deeply. And it's a different audiences, but you're, you're deciding winner, you're, you're picking winners and losers and deciding, you know, who, who is, um, who's doing well, who's not? Who, what is, um, what's working, what's not? And, um, ultimately you're just trying to educate and, um, in, in audience in, in, in the best way you know how. So, um, yeah, I will say the difference, and you didn't ask this, but the difference between covering the courthouse and covering city government is the courthouse, you're dealing with lawyers who are very direct and very blunt. And you can have, um, you know, just very, uh, very real, direct conversations with them. Whereas city government, you're dealing with politicians who often, you know, aren't as direct. And you have to, sometimes you have to think, what did they say? What did they mean there? Whereas a lawyer will tell you exactly what they mean. So that, that was an adjustment.
Okay, I will scan one more time. I want to make sure I didn't miss anybody. But I think that is it. So, and we are at the top of the hour. So, um, Ryan, gosh, thank you again so much for being with us. The observations and insights I think were really valuable. And I guess as you leave us, uh, if you could let us know of the things you mentioned, and there were a lot, I think, big ticket items that you covered. Uh, you know, let us know what is going to be really, really, we should be paying the most attention to as we sort of go into this new year. Um, and I would again, just thank you so much for your time as you close us out. For those of you who are listening or watching this at a later time, if you want to know more about our programs and find out more about Capital City Village, we're at capitalcityvillage.org. So Ryan, again, I'll let you take us out.
Yeah, thanks for having me on. Hopefully I didn't ramble too much. Um, I, I, I think the biggest issue, the, the thing that all Austinites really need to pay attention to in 2022 is again, the affordability piece. And, uh, we're, uh, I, I don't want to sound alarms, but I think we, uh, we risk losing who we are as a city that's, you know, keep Austin weird vibe if we are only catering to the wealthy and only building homes for the wealthy, only selling homes to the wealthy. You know, you, you, you go down South Congress right now and it's a lot of high-end upscale shops and it, it's, it's just not the same. So I think, uh, I think it's a crisis. I think it's, um, something that city leaders recognizes the crisis. Can they fix it? You know, let's, let's check back in in, uh, a few months or towards the end of the year and we'll, we'll see where we're at.
I think we'll take you up on that. I think we will check out, see how we're doing. Kind of check the temperature again. Gosh, thank you again so much for this. And to everyone else on the call today, thank you. Uh, many applause. And yeah, I hope that you will, uh, stay connected to us and we'll keep reading.
Appreciate the invitation. Everybody have a great day.
You too.
Thanks, everyone.
Bye-bye. Thank you, Tommy.
Absolutely.